To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under announcements, McKenzie Murphy is excused from this evening's meeting. For announcements, all I have are upcoming meetings. Thursday, October 26th is a regular meeting and the town council meets on the first and third Thursdays in the months of November and December. So November's meetings will be November 2nd and November 16th, both at 7:00 PM, all here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Kids Cove Playground will be temporarily closed. Department of Public Works will need a temporarily closed Kids Cove Playground for the week of October 23rd through October 27th for necessary maintenance and repairs to playground. Public Works will be installing the replacement slides that were damaged in the storm last winter, repairing several playground elements and adding new service throughout the playground. Sinuses will be installed notifying park users of the temporary closure. Merrimack Fire Rescue Department's open house will be held on Saturday, October 14th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Please join us for a day fun of education to include events, life support demonstrations, fire engine water deck gun demonstration, arson dog demonstration, airbag demonstration, firefighter emergency bailout demonstration, burn building demonstration, live fire extinguisher training, obstacle course, and much, much more. Merrimack Police Department's open house is also back. It will be held Saturday, October 21st from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Special events include New Hampshire Fire Marshal Demo, K-9 Anthem, K-9 Demo with Sergeant Steve Wallen and his dog Dre, Taser Demo, no, I am not getting taste, Bomb Roadmap Demo, New Hampshire Bomb Squad will be on site, station tours, our Comfort Dog Mac, and Merrimack Search and Rescue Vehicle, Incident Command Vehicle, Search and Rescue Jones, Southern New Hampshire Special Operations Unit SWAT, Barricade, Armored Vehicle, and much, much more. The Town of Merrimack's Media Division encourages residents to celebrate Community Media Day on Thursday, October 20th. Community Media connects residents to their neighbors, community organizations, schools, and local government. Learn more and follow Merrimack TV and social media. The Last Household Hazardous Waste Collection for 2023 season is Saturday, November 4th from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM in Nashua at 9 Stadium Drive. For the cost of $15 per vehicle, residents can bring up to 10 gallons or 20 pounds of waste. There is an additional charge of $1 per gallon over the 10 gallons and 50 cents per pound over the 20 pounds. It's only cash and checks, so please make checks payable to NRSWMD. And finally, beginning November 15th, the library's elevator will be temporarily out of service for the repair project. We expect this project to take about five weeks complete. During this time, the lower level, including the children's room, restrooms, and clump room, will only be accessible using the main staircase. Please check the library's events calendar for programming updates and contact Library Director Vet Cowsor with any questions. We apologize for any inconvenience that this may cause. Thank you.
All right. Nancy?
Yes. I'd like to take this opportunity to correct some information that was on the record. Remember, I'm going to read first from the meeting minutes regarding the zoning board of adjustments reports that we received last meeting, which was September 28th. September 28th was during that meeting. These are minutes from the zoning board of adjustment report that we received. Vice Chair Harrington asked how many hearings they've had in which Mr. Kinescu shared that they don't have exact metrics, but this particular year has been very similar to that last two years with typical requests. Vice Chair Harrington asked for a guesstimate on approvals versus disapprovals, in which Mr. Kinescu stated that the approvals are around 85% for variances, and there is a firm history of denying appeals. I have since found out, and this is what I want to do, is correct information. I have since found out, first of all, to preface this, I did email the chair and vice chair of the zoning board of adjustment and offered to have them come in and correct the record, and apparently they've chosen to have me do it. So that's why I'm doing it. So I became aware that a report was submitted to the zoning board of adjustments in preparation for the annual meeting, that they come through the annual review. And I'm going to quote from the information that they were provided. Since, I'm not going to read literally the whole thing, just the important things. Since the start of 2023, the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment has granted 21 variances and two special exceptions. Of the granted petitions, a few stand out, including the approval of variance to permit a 520.8 square foot billboard signed to be erected at 526 DW Highway, a variance to allow six residential units on a 19,140 square foot lot, whereas 40,000 square feet per unit is required at 2 Railroad Avenue in Town Center Overlaid District, and a special exception to permit a drive-through restaurant use in the C1 District related to the Hot Rice Cafe. The board has not issued any denials this year, but had two appeals of administrative decisions. The board currently has additional four variance applications. Therefore, they've denied, and this is official, they've had no denials the entire year. And I wanted to make sure, you know, this is a significant, substantial difference from what was reported, and I just wanted to make sure that the record is clear. Okay?
Thank you, Nancy. Anything further from the council on announcements? No. Next on the agenda is comments from the present public. If anybody would like to address the council, they could come up here at the table or mic, but it doesn't seem that anybody's here. So we'll move on to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. And the item that we have this evening is recognition of the retirement of Phil Machino, who had worked for the Town of Merrimack Public Works Department for more than 39 years. His service went from June 18th, 1984, to October 1st, 2023. And anybody who knows Phil knows what he can do. It's very obvious when you see the grounds around Town Hall and so on. And for me, I know that when he would dig into things, do his research, he would spend a lot of time finding out what the best application might be for what he'd do. And the one thing that I always think of as a siding on this Town Hall, it is a cedar siding, and I don't know that it's been painted since. It needs a washing, I know that, but he had the manufacturer have it all primed and ready to go, both sides, ends, butt ends. And when they installed it, he watched it like a hawk to make sure they were doing it correctly. And I think its longevity has proven itself. Yeah, no. And again, it does need a washing, which we'll be talking about maybe in the budget time. But anyhow, so Phil would be getting a rocking chair, and he's asked that the value of that, what that would cost a town, that that be donated to the St. James Food Pantry. And so that's what we'd like to do. But Phil, he lived and breathed it here. I know that. But, all right. So we'll move on. First item under appointments is the council will be presented with an overview presentation on workforce housing so that the council and the townspeople might have a better understanding. And George, I can't remember your last name. George, right. How can I forget something like that? George Reagan is here to speak to us about it.
It's on. Yep. Thank you for inviting me. It's great to be here to talk about certainly a complex subject that's sort of fraught with a lot of misperceptions and misunderstandings, but there's a lot of, I think, opportunity for clarification. So I want to talk a bit about, you know, what workforce housing is, and then talk just a little about the workforce housing law so you know what to point back to in terms of the workforce housing law that was passed in 2008 and became effective in 2010. I turned the volume off for this. And so beyond that, I think that we've got a couple of minutes of a video I wanted to share. We've been working with Jay Childs, who produced Communities and Consequences, if you had heard about that. There's two versions of that. And now we're doing Housing Factor Fiction to try to talk about key elements of housing. And one of this is going to be is called What Is Workforce Housing? I do say, as we try to endeavor to try to make affordable housing happen in different ways in communities throughout the state, that this is an unprecedented time where the headwinds of just the cost and volatility of materials, the availability of labor, and the cost of credit make building anything affordable really, really difficult. And we're in an environment with a very, very low vacancy rate and rentals. We do an annual rent survey, so I think you may be familiar with that. And certainly, we're seeing the median sale price of a home upwards of $400,000 and more, and the availability, the inventory being a few weeks to a month on hand, when really a balance mark would be six or seven months. So there's a lot of challenges there, period. But to stick back to workforce housing, I'm going to start with this video that we put together, just a couple of minutes, and then I can take it from there.
In this episode, we tackle the term workforce housing. We hear this term often in our conversations about New Hampshire's housing crisis, and there is a crisis. The state needs over 23,000 additional housing units right now. That's tens of thousands of New Hampshire residents who are struggling to find an affordable and inviting place to call home. These are people we need in our workforce in order to keep New Hampshire's economy strong. But jargon can be confusing. When we talk about workforce and affordable housing, what are we talking about? People who speak out against workforce housing often perpetuate myths and negative stereotypes, further confusing the issue. Workforce housing is housing of all types for people of all ages making a range of incomes. It's housing for workforce and others in your community, and it's more prevalent than many realize. New Hampshire's workforce housing law states what a moderate income worker can support in terms of renting or buying. It doesn't make much sense to talk about whether housing is affordable to someone making millions, to talk about whether it's affordable to the average worker. And that's what the workforce housing law does. If you're spending 30% or less of your household income on your housing costs, your housing is affordable to you. Let's see what workforce housing looks like. It can look like this, and this. You may not even know that workforce housing is located right here in this former school, and here, and hidden right here. That brings us to our first myth, that all workforce housing is big, ugly, multifamily buildings. Workforce housing can include all types of housing, from single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, quads, accessory dwelling units, and yes, apartment buildings like these. It can include large multifamily buildings mixed with commercial spaces in places where that makes sense. Manufactured housing is a great example of housing that's affordable to folks who want to own their own homes. Single-family homes and townhouses can be affordable to members of the workforce, too. There's also the myth that workforce housing is only new construction. The fact is that some of the best examples of workforce housing are reimagined, existing, and even historic properties. Finally, maybe the most important myth to dispute is that workforce housing is for other people. A generation ago, we didn't need the term workforce housing because we had an abundance of housing that was affordable to a wide range of people. In fact, each of the seven places that I've lived have been workforce housing, because that's what my family could afford. You've probably lived in workforce housing, too, even if you didn't know it. Now that we know what workforce housing is, let's find a way to engage in conversations in our communities and spur action. We're already over 23,000 units behind, and the need is projected to more than triple in the next two decades. We can't afford to wait. We need more workforce housing now.
So that's just a, you know, a short video that kind of puts everything, I think, in a better perspective. I think often when we talk about workforce housing, like the video says, it's a thing. It's this building being built over here. And in some cases, through our low income housing tax credit program at New Hampshire Housing, some of those developments are built, and they're long-term affordable. But a lot of the housing types that Sarah mentioned in the video are ones that might just be naturally occurring affordable housing. They may already be here. She told her story. When I bought my ranch in Dover, it was affordable to me. My income fell within workforce housing guidelines, but it wasn't stamped a workforce housing house. It just happened to be a small house on a small lot and available. And as I mentioned with headwinds, we don't have a lot of that existing older supply, and it's a challenge to build some new ones. But it is something that's more than just a building on that corner that's labeled workforce housing. I think that's important distinction. And it goes to, you know, just what goes into our minds when we think about workforce housing. And that was the purpose of this video, to say, those are actual workforce houses. Some of them, like in Jaffrey, was a tax credit development. Right next door, and those are Jaffrey Mills, was one that was just market rate. And so there's units that are existing that are workforce, maybe through a program or just workforce, because you built an accessory dwelling, and it's renting for under what would be considered a workforce housing maximum. And I guess that's where I would segue into the workforce housing law. It could be a lot of things. Since the beginning, when it was passed in 2008, I saw it as a really important guideline for communities to look at, because people were asking the question, what's affordable and what's workforce? Well, Sarah had mentioned, what's affordable is when all of us think about what our incomes are, are we paying more than 30% on rent and utilities? Are we paying more than 30% on principal, interest, taxes, and insurance? And if we are, that's largely unaffordable. In the state, roughly, there's about 40, between 40 and 45% of renter households are paying more than 30% on rent. It's a little bit lower in homeownership, certainly because there's credit criteria that sort of guides that a little bit more. So the workforce housing law, you know, the core meaning, and I gave you all these documents, and I'm going to try to show a place on our website in a second that talks about it. So the core meaning was, and this came from a 1991 Supreme Court ruling, Britain versus Chester, where all municipalities need to provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for workforce housing, including rental and multifamily. And then for the rental, I'm sorry, for not multifamily, but in a majority of the residentially zoned area. So you had to allow workforce housing in a majority of your residentially zoned area, but only in some areas for multifamily. So there was a distinction realizing that there was a need for affordable single-family homes, and realizing that where you put multifamily may not be able to be done in a majority of residentially zoned area. And that reasonable restrictions apply. So health, safety, sanitation, all of that are still things that guide whether something can be built or not. But again, you know, what I think was really, really important was it put a meaning on what affordable was and then on what was workforce. So as the law was written, it was how do we try to get at a sense of a median workforce housing income for purchase and one for rent? And so the definitions of what workforce would be, would be housing that's affordable to a renter, family of three making 60% of the area median income. And I'll translate that into numbers in a second for, that would impact Merrimack. Or an owner, family of four, making 100% of the area median income. And so it doesn't mean that it has to be a family of three or a family of four. That's just how they got to an income maximum to then say, well, what can you afford if you pay only 30% of your income on monthly housing costs? It doesn't include age restriction, age restricted units. And I think that's important. So when a town looks at that, then they're looking at the regulations to say, are we providing these reasonable and realistic opportunities? And that's when you look at home sales that may have happened, or rentals that have been happening. So that, and I won't go much deeper, because I know you have other things on your agenda, but it's a good guideline that's available on our website. So Merrimack is in Hillsborough County. So when you turn those percentages into numbers, 60% of the area median income for renters, about $62,750. So again, when we think about, and this would be the upper level of what would be affordable, that's a gross rent of $1,00570. So our median rent, I think that we discovered this year is upwards around $1,600 a month for the state, and it fluctuates in different areas. And we did a rental survey, and you can see some of your own data there. For purchase, the income that was based on 100% of area median income is $116,200. And when you think about some housing assumptions of interest rates and the like, that's about a house of $333,000 for a purchase price. And those would be the top. So the idea is, do we have rentals here that are at $1,570 or less, or a home that could be sold for $333,000 or less? And I think one of the most important good things, I think, communities have been doing is turning that into discussions of people that are in our communities, people that we want in our communities, people that our employers need to come here to fund our economic base. And I think those are important conversations that we've seen happening, that kind of takes these numbers, takes incomes, and relates them into real jobs and real people and ourselves. And I think the thing that we add, I mean, that was kind of touched on there, is I also, when I think about workforce housing, I'm thinking about as we all leave our jobs and what our incomes might be. And so then it takes on another meaning, but it's like, is there a house for me that's not four-bedroom that I've lived in, that maybe I can afford it, what my income is? And so this isn't really just for the workforce, but the purpose of saying that was to tie it back to our economic growth and stability, which is really, really important. So I will just put back up a website here, because I had, so some of those income numbers.
New Hampshire is aging?
Are here. I'm sorry. We all know it's aging. I'm living proof. 2023 workforce housing purchase and rent limits are there, if you see that. This is our Housing Challenges and Solutions page. There's a whole page dedicated to resources. I shared the meeting, the Workforce Housing Challenge Guidebook that I shared with Paul and the chair and the vice chair, but this is all right there as well. It's a really good resource. And if you're having working groups or other meetings, I would be happy. I mentioned Sarah Reitzman. She's our manager of community engagement. I'm the director of community engagement. Through the Invest NH $5 Million Hop Program, Housing Opportunities Program, we've been working with dozens of communities and with our partners Cooperative Extension to do a housing academy, how do we talk about housing, to try to make that be a conversation we can have that's not divisive, but actually can be inclusive. So I think I'll leave it for there for any Q and A. I know that's kind of a really big overview, but just wanted to be able to share some of that and some of these resources. And I did mention to Paul, I'll go here, there's a whole Publications and Reports page, if I could get to it, that has a ton of good information. We just did a study on short-term rentals, statewide housing needs assessment, our residential rent survey. And we're refreshing a school enrollment study that we did years ago, three of them with Russ Tebow from Applied Economic Research. And he did a whole school study, and so we're refreshing that. And also call your attention to this, there's Urban 3 done by Joe Minicoz. He talks about the value per acre of property, and he came to the state last year and the year before and did some research on, you know, the types of properties and their value per acre potency. And it was fascinating that one of the things that came out in terms of value per acre was mixed-use properties. So there's some interesting information there that you might find useful. And again, feel free to call on me at any time. And with that, I'll leave it open for questions, if there are any.
Anybody have any questions or thoughts? It was. I personally am going to have to do a little more digging into it to have a better understanding.
Yeah. It's a lot to cover in 10 or 15 minutes.
But you had mentioned it has to be allowed in 50% of our residential area. Did I understand that?
Yeah, majority of the residentially zoned area for single-family. For multifamily, it's got to be somewhere. So it's not the same 50%. So that was one of the distinctions in the workforce housing law that was done years ago. So.
So if somebody comes with a proposal, it has to be honored as long as it fits in those criterias?
Right. And that's where it's the reasonable and realistic opportunities. If you're looking and saying, you know, our land use regulations and other incentives are allowing homes to be built and be sold for $333,000, you know, here and there, are we trying to do that in a majority of the residentially zoned area? And I think that's where the spirit of the law is. And it would be the same thing with multifamily. So, you know, what I kind of left out is, you know, there's a quick appeals process as well if you declare you're doing a workforce housing project. But I think that, you know, one of the things that I've seen through that is like, if you've got area that's thoughtfully zoned, if someone wants to put a development where it doesn't make sense, it doesn't mean that it can just be built there because they're declaring workforce housing. It goes back to the spirit and intent of your own workforce or your own land use regulations, and how workforce housing is addressed in those land use regulations. And that doesn't mean it has to be its own section. It could be as simple as you allow detached ADUs, or, you know, in your community, you may be providing naturally occurring affordable housing, because it might rent for less than $1,00570. It may not, but it also might.
And I don't want to, if somebody has anything.
No, go ahead. You're doing great.
On the financing end of it all, where I see workforce housing isn't going to be in homes built, individual homes. I don't imagine that in Merrimack. I think the land value is too high for that to occur. So it's going to be in apartment kind of setups, I believe. And I know we have a small unit down here across from Toll House Preschool. So from a financing end, how is that, people who would develop something to that effect, do they get longer-term financing, lower interest rates? What are the incentives for them to do that?
Yeah. So you may be talking about the low-income housing tax credit program that we administer, which is a federal program through the Department of Treasury. And so that would be financing that a developer could get. And when they get that financing, they have to have all of those units at some level of affordability. Sometimes it's 30% of the area median income, and 50, and then up to 60, and even some they can allow some market rate. But that federal program is all about funding affordable workforce housing units. What the hope is, though, is that that's a very, we had eight applications for our, or nine, eight or nine applications for our low-income housing tax credit program. We can only fund about four or five of them this year. So they're not the answer. For the other small D developers, it might be even us as homeowners, like how do we build an ADU? Number one, can we, is it allowed? Number one. And then number two, yeah, where do I find credit? Can I refinance my home? What can I do? For another developer, that's the thing, like where are they going to access capital? And part of that that ends up happening is where do you pull some of the levers in your own land use regulations that might make something affordable? I think in this environment, especially with single-family homes, it's tough to pay for, it's tough to pay for all the materials by just doing 100% workforce affordable, selling it $333,000. And so this sort of requires planning boards to be learning from developers about the economics of development and saying like, can we provide an incentive bonus, like inclusionary zoning? Can we allow a certain extra density of units in exchange for a certain percentage that's going to be rented at $1,570? So for that person, wherever they access their credit, it's a question of, does that credit, does their pro forma work for them? Is it economically viable? And I think that's important, because there's been a lot of, I think, attempts to change land use regulations, but it's not tested against maybe, or not well-tested against a developer or a third-party consultant that can say, you know, these might have a fighting chance of trying to create some kind of workforce housing in the environment that we're in now, without it having to be a tax credit program, because it's just not enough to go around. And so some of it is, how do we incentivize developers to do what it is we want them to do? And as I said at the outset, this is a really challenging time to try to do this. I look and say, for rentals, I see ADUs as being the. the important thing, but I'm a homeowner. I don't, I can't just, you know, build an ADU. And so there may be some, some challenges there. And then the, the same side, same on the, on the for sale side, it seems like, you know, manufactured housing is, is, is starting to look better and more creative. But we've got a mindset of, of what it looks like and what we see that's still out there. And yet from an affordability to, for a single, to, to purchase something and have an, an asset gain value, a mobile home in a park, a resident owned community is like a way to get into homeownership. And it's, you know, that we're, we're getting pushed to that level, just again, like we talked about, just the headwinds of the cost of materials and the like. So the question might be, are we allowing our manufactured housing? And you'd have to have a very, I think, important conversation with people to understand how that fits in or not, and get beyond maybe some of the, the misperceptions of, of that. This, I'm talking with New Hampshire Community Loan Fund, lots of great new designs that, that don't look like that double wide modular kind of look. And they're still like the closest to being some, you know, to being affordable as opposed to perhaps a, a single family house this day and age because of the, the forces at work.
Sure. All right. I guess we're all set, George. I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming.
Happy to come back. I also have to give a plug for Nashville Regional Planning Commission, Jay Mancara. They're obviously always a great resource as well. So.
He used to work for us. He's wonderful.
Yeah, he's a great guy, smart. And so. So, but feel free to use us anytime, but I appreciate the time and hopefully it was helpful.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, that's not here. So we're gonna hold off on our public hearing. Pat Murphy will be here a little bit later. She has another engagement she's tending to right now. Any legislative updates? Nancy, do you have anything? Nope. All right. And we didn't, Paul, you didn't get any emails or anything from anybody? And I didn't. Okay. Tom Mann's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the years, when we presented the CIP, we've done it several different ways. I've come to the town council first. I've come to the planning board first. I just want to get a feel for how does the council want me to prepare and present the CIP? Do you want me to come to the town council first with the CIP? Or do you want me to go to planning board, get their recommendations on the major projects and then come back to town council? The charter says.
Can you explain what's the advantage or disadvantage of each way?
Yes. The charter says that I have to go to the planning board first and then come back to the town council. The advantage of coming to the town council first is if there's a project that the town council doesn't support in the major section, because that's the only section that goes to the planning board. It can get pulled out before it goes to the planning board and before they vote on it. Vice versa, a plus is, is if once the planning board hears the projects, they put their recommendations as needed necessity, a must, and they, they rank them in that order. So something that might be a priority in the department or the department need might not be a priority according to what the planning board sees as a need for the town. So it's six of one, half dozen of another. I just, last year I came in front of the council first and everybody said, well, what, what the, what did the planning board say?
Because we were used to it, the other way.
And, you know, so I'm just asking, what way do, does the council want me to proceed in the month of November to kind of streamline the process?
I kind of like it coming here first, just for the simple reason. You don't think so?
I, no, I was happy with the planning board seeing it first, but, but it doesn't make enough difference to me. So.
I agree. It doesn't make that much difference. What do you ladies think?
Being on the planning board. It's six of one, half dozen of the other. It really is because, you know, the planning board's going to look at it and go sidewalks. And, you know, but they don't really know what projects may be in the works from the council's perspective. So it's like the blind leading the blind. At least that's how I felt being on both boards and seeing it both ways. But you know what I mean? It's like, you don't know what the other half knows or thinks or whatever. So it's almost like we should do it concurrently in the same room to say, you know, this is what we're thinking. And, but that's just a thought.
The other option is to do what we've, have them come to the town council, go to the planning board, and then bring the planning board's response back to the town council for a final decision, which is an extra meeting for you to talk about it. But no, it, that way it kind of gets both sides because it gives our opinions to the planning board and then gets their opinions before any final decision going forward is made.
I have to go to two meetings. One way it doesn't matter to me. Which one I go first, which one I go second, you know, it doesn't matter. And then coming back, it's, it's simple. It's just easier to recommend.
Yeah, by then you've already gone through it. So you don't have to send them.
I sort of like that idea because really if it's presented to us, we provide some.
Some guidance.
Guidance. Go to the planning board. They will be aware of our comments. They make a decision. When it comes back to us, we're just finalizing what they're saying about us. So I, I think it's an extra step, but I don't think time wise, it's significantly more. Right? And it really, you're going to be make, you're going to be doing the two town council meetings anyway. It's not as if you're making a special meeting.
You know, honestly, with the new community development director, I want to see this process actually be used as more of a planning document than what we've been using it for is, is we're running up in November with this is funding and this is how we're, we're going forward. And really everything is related to funding and, and don't get me wrong, but we've been running these projects saying, okay, this one's got to get pushed. This one doesn't. Whereas these are the projects, these are the ones we're expecting to do. And then when budget time comes around, those are the times that we make decisions saying, wait a second, we can't fund a million dollars into XYZ capital reserve, but we got to back this out. By backing this out, we know what the ramifications are pushing it. But we've been doing it in November and then in December you get your budget and then we start in January. So it's been more of a, a budgeting document than what it's supposed to. CIP is supposed to be a planning document. It's capital improvement plan. So I'm trying to get that back. So we, we actually do this late summer, you know. But like I said, I have to go to two meetings anyways. Dawn has to go to two meetings anyway. So we're good. Most of the projects we talk about is, is DPW on, on a lot of those projects. So, you know. It doesn't matter to me. I just didn't want to come forward and everybody's saying, what are you doing here? Go take it to the planning board first or vice versa. So I don't have a problem coming forward to the council first and going to planning board or I just wanted to know what the feel of the town council was.
That would be a great idea. Do it that way.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Nope. We'll do.
Barbara?
And also just something to think about from when you go to the planning board and the planning board is looking at the list of capital improvements. A lot of those are not anything what we would consider on the planning board. So if, if, if a capital improvement project is to fix drainage ditches, planning board doesn't really care. So we're, we're more concerned about what are you building? So I, I almost, you know, just something to keep in mind as you look at the process, now that we have a new community development director, like what really needs to go on that plan? What really needs to go to the planning board versus just rubber stamping it and sending it to us and, you know, okay.
It's governed by RSA actually.
Well, they didn't, they need to be updated.
Get some legislators up there.
Yeah, really.
Do we know any legislators?
I mean, if you think about some of the capital improvement projects that have gone on for the last year, it's like.
Bridges.
Yeah, like, okay, planning board? Do you care? No. So, you know.
But the state says you have to care.
Exactly. So it's like.
You know, and there's other things too, that, that governance, not just state RSA.
There were other, other laws involved, but.
We hope limits like a hundred thousand dollar, anything over a hundred thousand dollars goes there. And that's been there for eighteen years and is a project for a hundred thousand dollars.
You can't do a project for a hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly. So. All right. I got some others. If we're done, I got my marching orders. Adam, you got your marching orders? Okay. Severn, the Severns Fields Bridge on Amherst Street at Severns Bridge Road and County Road at the Amherst Town Line has been closed for repairs. They began the work on Tuesday, October 10th. Demolition work on the bridges, on expansion joint has begun. We're looking about four to six weeks for completion to get that expansion joint repaired and replaced. Waste water facility and solid waste along with the highway garage will be closed for public to the public next Wednesday, October 18th, between the hours of one, at eleven AM to one PM for mandatory training. Once again, that's Wednesday, October 18th, between the hours of eleven AM to one for some mandatory training that we have to do for DPW's department. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next, on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull the item number one from the consent agenda, which is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments of mixed use developments permitted in the I-1 district by conditional use permit. I'd like to pull it because I'd like to make sure that there's a complete understanding as to what what is included in, and not included in this. And it's, bear with me.
And just, I'm going to recuse myself as I have been.
Thank you, Nancy. What, what the what the zoning amendment does is it removes, if I can get to my page, it removes section two point zero, two point four point D. And it repeals the entire section. And in its place, it realigns numbering and then adds a paragraph that I'll read if you don't mind. It's the, the addition will be all previously, previously approved mixed use conditional use permits, CUPs that existed at the time of this section being repealed shall be subject to the requirements of the former section two point zero, two point four point D. As existing in the zoning order, which is existing in the zoning ordinance revised as of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Any proposed modifications or amendments to those previously approved CUPs shall be required to comply with the requirements of the underlying zoning district they are located within and/or with the provisions of section nine, non-conforming uses. And that, that's what's going to be added to it is a and it's in its place of that, of the section that's repealed. So I don't know if anybody has anything, Tom?
No, I'm just, I'm curious. Back to January of two thousand twenty-one, I would have thought what we were talking about has been there longer than that because it included things like the Merrimack Premium Outlet Development and a couple of other CUPs. I guess I don't know exactly what's in the January fourteenth version.
That was revised on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. The ordinance was revised on January fourteen.
Yeah, but the election, the, the vote that was taken to add CUPs into the ordinance was well before two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, but I think it was amended in two thousand twenty-one is, is what happened.
Okay. I, I mean, I don't know what the, I guess I don't have it here. I don't know what it said in two thousand twenty-one. And I'm.
I think the amended version would have brought the whole thing back to its completion.
Back to two thousand twenty-one or back to before we put in the CUP?
But when it originally came forward, it came through and the amended version is what is there now in its entirety. And that's what we've repealed. And as far as, as far as it being a revision, I'm going off pause league because I've not taken the time to dig into that. But I, but I believe that if in fact that amendment had happened at that date, that everything coming forward would be that revised version. And so the whole thing is now revised version and everything is being repealed. And it would go back any, you know, anything that was already approved would go back to that date and everything in it at that point.
So that version doesn't have anything with the mixed use zoning provision in it is what I'm understanding.
Say that again?
Well, the discussion, and especially from other people, was that the mixed use section of the zoning ordinance, article two oh two four D. And this paragraph says, we're going back to section two oh two four D as existed in January of two thousand twenty-one. I'm just trying to verify that there's, there's no mixed use.
I see what you're saying, that the, something that was approved before that. Right. Would that have a negative effect on the previously proofed? I don't know what the revision was. So I'm not sure.
I mean, I, I guess this is a bad time to be going through that, but I.
So I think, and maybe I, I think what it's saying is any, anything that exists at the time of us repealing this is under the ordinance that we're repealing. The ordinance that we're repealing is the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one version. So it doesn't matter what happened prior to January.
Okay.
Right. Any approvals.
I think you're absolutely right.
Any approvals that are out there are grandfathered in.
Okay. Only those approvals that were in there from before are going to still be covered by that latest revision, which was two thousand twenty-one. Thank you. That clarified it completely for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Good job.
Thanks, Paul. All right. If now that I've got that taken care of, is there anybody who'd like to make a motion or what is the pleasure of the council?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to repeal section two point zero, two point four point D mixed use development permits in the I-1 district by conditional use permit. And the correction of section numbers in the remainder of section two point zero, two point four pursuant to Charter Article Five.
Second.
Shall I read that into the?
No, just to include the revised language.
To include the revised language that the council chair just read.
Motion by Andy.
Second by Barbara.
Second by Barbara. Oh, you made this. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I proposed abstain. It's five zero zero. Thank you. Actually, that was mentioned earlier, Nancy recusing her book for the book. All right. Under old business, the managers give an update on the membership requirements for the Heritage Commission.
Well, last time I was here, we talked about the Heritage Commission and we talked about the rulings in the charter, how the charter read. And the charter read that a planning board member would need to be appointed from the planning board. Charter read that a planning board member would need to be appointed. As we dove deeper into this, we have a town councillor who sits on the planning board and she also sits on the Heritage Commission. So by state law, they consider the Heritage Commission a land use board. So because she sits on the planning board and she sits on the Heritage Commission, no other planning board member can be appointed because you're only allowed one member of the planning board to be appointed to land use boards.
So she's taking up two positions.
Basically. Now, there are several options that we have.
She can't step down from the planning board.
Well, that is not an option. That, that's not one of the options.
But the ramifications, if I understand it correctly, is that there's one less voting member as a result. Now, my next question is, are there any significant votes that happened or the Heritage Commission, that one minus vote will be significant?
The, the issue is with the Heritage Commission and why this was brought up in the first place is because they were having a hard time getting a quorum for meetings. And with this one last person being on it, that just makes that three out of the four members now have to show up to start a meeting. We have an alternate who has to be interviewed. Once that person's interviewed, if they become an alter, it lessens the burden a little bit. The recommendations are because there is only four now actual members that could be appointed. One of the recommendations is another town councillor becomes part that fifth member until the conflict between the planning board and the Heritage Commission either goes away. Or so we, we reappoint, we appoint another town councillor. That means we'll have five. So there could be two town councillors on there because that's underneath the limit of four town councillors. So that's okay because it wouldn't be a town council meeting. So then you could have two on it. We let it run the way it is is another option, which is four full-time members. Once you get that alternate, that alternate basically will be right in as a full-time member at every meeting until the conflict goes away. Or the third option, which is not. Or the third option, which is not, I am not recommending or ideal, but I have to put on the table, is that the councillor resigns from the Heritage Commission, town councillor, another town councillor gets appointed, then the planning board appoints a member. I'm not recommending that, that's counterproductive, to have it that way. Because I could just see the planning board reappointing the town councillor to the board as their planning board rep as well, so we'd just go back to the two town councillors. Those are the three options, ran it by legal. I said, "They're ex officios, they're only appointed for one year." He said, "Next time you come around, next year, in April, when we do our reorganization, you have to look at it again, and if that councillor is no longer on the planning board or on the Heritage Commission, then you can appoint a planning board member." So it's, it's a little difficult. It's confusing, because I didn't think heritage as a land board, but in the states, in RSAs, they consider heritage as a land board or a historic commission. Because in other communities, the heritage actually, there, there's districts and things of that sort, that they have a lot of say with the planning board, so, but here, our heritage is more of a, you know, historic homes and things of that sort. We don't have a historic district. In town, we just look at the homes throughout town, and they do that, they do the Christmas cards, they do a bunch of good stuff to keep the history and heritage of Merrimack together, but it's not like we have a heritage or a historic district. So, those are your options, do nothing, appoint a new town councillor.
Several, a couple of years ago, when did I pick this up, maybe 2018, 19? Lon Woods was the councillor to the Heritage Commission, and we had put it through legal to say, "Could two town councillors be on heritage?" We were told no.
I have their, they said that was one of their options they gave.
I'm just saying.
Well, we have this...
I think that was for a different reason than, than what we're trying to do now.
Based on planning board.
Based on the planning board. Can't just have, you can't just have two town councillors on the heritage. If, if, Barbara, if you weren't on the planning board, we couldn't just appoint Tom Koenig to, to this too, as a second member.
So I would be happy, because we need the people on heritage, I would be happy to resign from the Heritage Commission, and that way, planning board could decide who they want to actually be as their member, and then the town council could appoint whoever they want to the heritage, and that way, we'd end up with two on the board. Because if we stick with what we have now, we're still down a member, because it won't resolve, so.
Yeah.
If I step aside, it resolves.
Your resigning doesn't buy anything if we have to appoint somebody else also, anyway.
But you would be, you would appoint someone who isn't on the planning board, if they were interested. That's the catch.
But not to say that I'm volunteering, but if I were to be appointed to the Heritage Commission, and you stayed as the planning board representative to the Heritage Commission, you'd still be the same thing. If you resigned from the Heritage Commission, you wouldn't be on heritage. I would be taking your place as being a member of the Heritage Commission, and you'd have to find somebody on the planning board...
Exactly.
To be a member.
Exactly, but the outcome would be to, a new member for heritage.
You'd have the two positions.
Right, you'd have the two positions.
And there is some interest, other than Barbara...
Yeah.
To join the Heritage Commission.
From the planning board?
From the planning board, a member of the planning board. Who have, who has reached out and is interested.
So, but for that to work, you have to resign, and somebody else needs to be appointed.
Yes.
Except you.
Except me?
Yes, because you were the alternate to the planning board.
Oh.
If I'm reading, if I'm understanding this correctly, the whole, the whole catch here is that I'm on both boards.
Right.
If I cease to be on one of them...
That's the problem.
It, yeah, the problem doesn't exist.
Which needs to be filled by the planning board.
Correct, and...
And then that'll allow...
Someone from the planning board to act, to be on, appointed.
For a councillor.
So will this have to come back at the next meeting to vote on?
So who's not here is, is...
Yeah, Mackenzie.
Is Mackenzie, so we could, we could nominate Mackenzie to the...
I would say that since, since the resignation came tonight, we'd have to do it as a, we'd have to do it and specifically announce the resignation and appointments, resignations, that Barbara's stepping back, and then we'd put something underneath, new business, to appoint a town council rep, and at the same time, hopefully, we'll have a planning board rep, so you can appoint them at the same time.
Yeah.
The two of them at the same time.
So they would be notified that they need to...
Yeah, actually, they were ready, they were ready to go at their last meeting and discuss this, and the question came up, and like I said, I was not thinking heritage as a land board.
Right.
My fault, I should have read the RSAs, I guess, closer, but with talking to legal, that is a land board, so I put the kibosh on it, however, the message went out to the planning board, so there's been a member that has reached back out and said, "What does it pertain to, you know, how, how often do they meet, what do I need to do?", kind of deal, and I don't know if he's still interested, but he would be interested, so...
So put it on the next meeting.
I would put it on the next meeting, and just at the, you have a meeting on Monday night, Barbara, I would announce your intentions after that meeting, that you're...
Yep.
To them and everything else that you're planning on stepping down.
Yeah, I'll get with John and Chip, so they're not taken blindsided. But it's not that I don't love being on heritage, I mean, I've done it now for a couple of years, and we have some fun times, but for the betterment of the Heritage Commission, I mean, they get an extra person if I do this and step aside, so.
All right.
Who wants to replace Barbara as, as that one?
As a town council rep to the Heritage Commission?
To the ex officio, to the Heritage.
I mean, I, I used, before Barbara did it, I was doing it, so I, you know, if nobody wants to do it, I have a light load anyhow. I feel a little guilty about that, but, so, not really. But, so, yeah, if nobody wants to do it, I'll, I'll do the Heritage Commission.
All right, so that resolves that issue, we'll just get the resignation.
How often do they meet?
Once a month.
Yeah, okay.
Unlike planning board.
No. See, I thought you would resign the planning board, because that's a heavy lift, you like it too much. All right, so... No. It still exists. All right, so, Tom?
Nothing.
Nothing. We're good? Item one of the new business, the council to receive an update from chief of the proper electric vehicle charging stations.
Yeah, councillor Healy asked us about a bunch of things, and that related to, you know, electric vehicles and things of that sort. They're becoming more prominent in, in New Hampshire, being used, charged. A lot of people are buying hybrids, hybrid plugins, things of that sort, and talking to the chief, and, and we've had discussions through, through, you know, fire and training and, and things of that sort, and, you know, about his guys pushing, you know, how does he, if there's an accident, how they go about it, things of that sort. So I asked the chief, just to put some safety concerns and considerations when people are looking at buying electric plug-in vehicles or hybrid plug-in vehicles, what the, kind of like, what they need to be, what they don't get told at the dealership about, you know, replacement of batteries and things of that sort, so...
Barbara brought this agenda aside, monitor.
And one of the, what started this, actually, was the fact that there was a instructional or seminar or something going on on a national basis about how do you fight a fire for an electrical vehicle, because I'm sure all of you have seen pictures where one, like, you know, EV catches fire, and then next thing you know, everything in the parking garage is on fire as well, and the fact that they're so difficult to put out, so my, one of my questions was, you know, are we, as we get more and more EVs, not only in town but in the state, are we prepared for this type of fire, et cetera, et cetera, and, and chief said yes.
Here I am, but yes. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to provide some information in talking with Paul, we want to keep it simple and easy, and at the end, you'll certainly, you know, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but it's, it, it is an interesting topic, so we'll go through it very quickly. So, if you purchase an electric vehicle, obviously, you need to charge your vehicle to keep it where you want it, so you can get to place B and back to place A, wherever it is that you want to travel. There are steps you can take to lower your risk of fire and electric shock injury related to charging electrical vehicles. So before you buy one, and you want to charge it at your home, you probably should invest the monies and get an electrician to evaluate where it is you want to charge the vehicle. A new dedicated circuit for your electric vehicle charging device would be the best way to go. Now, some of the older homes, the wiring may not be suitable for electric vehicle supply equipment. That's where the electrician can give you that, you know, information and tell you whether your system is adequate or not. Most people probably don't understand there's different levels of charge. So, since people want their vehicles charged rather quickly, the standard one that comes with the vehicle is a level one, that's a very slow rate of charge, takes quite a while to charge your vehicle. A level two charges at a much higher rate, so it goes a lot faster. So that would be something that most people may want to invest in, is the level two, that's kind of like a 240 volts, that'd be like plugging an electric stove or your dryer, if you think of it on those terms, right? And the other one, the slow charge, is just plugging in a television or a light. Granted, we're talking a little more voltage than a light or a television, but that's the same type of cord when you're looking at the different types. So, again, with anything that we buy, or anything that we do, follow the manufacturer's guidelines when charging your vehicle. So there's a lot of things that, you know, you really shouldn't do, that people may, quote, cheat the system, "Well, I'll just use it for a little while", and then they, you know, continue to use it until it's a failure. But always check with your local dealer if you need additional information on how to charge your vehicle. So, purchasing a charging device that is certified by a nationally recognized testing laboratory is essential. Make sure the equipment that you're going to use has been tested and is recognized by some reputable inspection certified testing agency. A lot of the issues that we see are people using the equipment or materials that don't meet the standard of the original manufacturer. They've been modified, or substituted, or they're using less quality materials, which can cause the failure. So to plug your level one EV charger directly into an outlet designed to handle that amperage, we talked about that before, that your electrician can help you with that, and never use a multi-plug adapter or an extension cord. And those are some things that we talk about every day, about just basic fire safety and electrical safety, right? Do not use extension cords. If you are using a lot of extension cords, you probably should invest in having your home rewired and having proper outlets put in. It's an expense, yes, I understand, but in the long run, it's a safety issue, right? And some of the things that people forget, while it's nice to go to Ocean State Joblot and buy the extension cord for $2.50, that's probably not the right charging cord to do some of the equipment, and not just vehicles, but other things in your home. You probably shouldn't be using those extension cords, they're on that type of equipment. Another thing that they recommend is installing a residential current device that, with the charging unit, and this will turn it off if there's a fault detected and, and help prevent a fire. Now, what this is, is it's like a ground fault interrupting circuit. You probably have seen them in your bathroom, same idea, that if for some reason, the circuit gets overloaded or finds the ground, it's going to shut it off, so that no more current can go through that particular device. Place all charging device components out of reach of children when not in use, again, kind of speaks for itself, but if you have it in your garage, and your kids like to play in the garage, you know, an opportunity for them to play with equipment they probably should be playing with. Maintain the components of your charging station according to the manufacturer's maintenance guidelines. Again, everything is going to go back to, what does the manufacturer recommend? How do you take care of the equipment that you have? Signs of excessive wear may indicate a potential shock or hazard. Never use an electrical vehicle charger with obvious signs of damage. Again, a lot of people will use things, "I'm just going to use it tonight, I'll fix it tomorrow." Well, that's the night they have a problem. So, it's never worth the risk. Cover the electrical vehicle charging station outlet to stop water from entering. Some of these outlet charging stations are outside, which is fine, they're perfectly acceptable, but you got to take necessary precautions so that it's safe to use when you want to use it. Again, check the manufacturer's guidelines to make sure it's safe to charge your vehicle in wet conditions. It may not be capable of being charged when it's raining or snowing, or any type of moist air that might charge, cause a problem for you. So, overall, charging an electrical vehicle is safe when done with certified equipment. Following these tips, you can lower your risk of having an associated fire or an electrical shock of injury. Does anybody have, again, basics on electrical vehicle safety? As far as, you know, the information that's out there, it's funny, we just had a meeting today of the state chiefs, and as far as the state fire marshal is aware of, we're trying to do our best to provide as much information as we can, there's really only been two vehicles in the state of New Hampshire that have caught fire that were electrically charged, so there's only been two. Now, that's not to say that it might not be others, but that no one's reported it to the office. So we're trying to put out the message to all the communities, if you've had one, can you let us know? Because there has been some talk up at the legislature about how to help the fire service with this problem, if there even is a problem. And they're asking a lot of questions, and we don't have a lot of answers for them, because we don't have a lot of data to give back to them. So we're doing our best to collect the data as, as much as we can, so people have information to make decisions on, so that's what we're trying to do.
And chief, your guys have gone to some trainings?
Yeah, they've offered, there's been two opportunities for training to be better prepared for these type of events. One was through the Seacoast Fire Chiefs Organization, and I believe the other one was through the New Hampshire Fire Academy, and we've been able to send some of our company officers to those programs, so they have a better concept and understanding of what they might need to do, should they encounter one of these types of problems, so...
And what do you need to do?
Well, again, it's going to depend on the situation. I'm sure you're learning more and more about electric vehicles and lithium-type batteries, and when they fail, you get this exothermic runway, runaway, where the battery's just going to implode on itself and continue to burn. There's not a lot of things that we can do at this time. There's a lot of products that have been suggested that may or may not work. Some of the subject matter experts that have gone to these conferences have recommended not to use some of them, because they've done testing, and most of them have been done FDNY. They've seen a huge uptick on these types of events, and have certainly had the opportunity to try different products that manufacturers want to try to sell to the fire service, and not a lot of them really do very well at extinguishing these types of fires. So far, it seems to be the best method is to just kind of let it burn itself out.
Which would take how long?
It depends on the size of the battery, depends on how many cells have been damaged, how many cells beyond the ones that are damaged are going to continue to burn till they've burned off their life cycle, so it, it, it's a variable, it's one of the things we really don't know.
Okay. Chief, does the, do we, does the code have any restriction requirements for some of our apartment buildings that have gone up in more recent years?
No, there is no regulation.
So you're going to have a charging station in the, underneath, a four-story?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I suspect a concrete floor, so I think it would slow down, I'm imagining, I have no idea. All right, is, if that's something that should be looked at, I'm surprised the National Code doesn't have those...
Well, like anything else, the codes can't keep up with technology, and because, you know, when we do want to update a code or revise a code, I mean, just some of the things that you guys do, takes one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, four meetings. Try to get a group of subject matter experts to meet, right, and then try to come up to a consensus, and then revise the code. That takes time, so we can't keep up with some of the technology that's out there.
And you need the data.
And we need data to support the argument, because the manufacturers of these products show us the information, we're not seeing it. So if we don't have data to support our argument to change a revision or make a code different, we don't have anything to stand on, so that's why it's important for us to do our level best to get as much data and information as we can. So if we want to make a change, we, we have the ability to do that.
And I would like to see it come from the national level regardless, I just, instead of us coming up with our own idea, I don't like to be...
Right.
Overburdened some anyhow, so, but anyhow.
Right.
All right.
Interesting.
I appreciate it, chief.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming. Tom, did you, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you, you mentioned there were two instances of fires, were those charging fires? Or were they electrical vehicle fires?
No, I don't know of the other one, there was one in Nashua, and I think that was a crash-related fire, where the vehicle crashed, and then somehow, the battery became a problem and started to break down, and caused that, caused that thermal runway, and it took them thousands of gallons of water to put, finally put that fire out. But they also were lucky and were able to go to the website of the manufacturer of the car to learn how to manage that problem, so... But not every manufacturer has that, you know, available to us.
Well, but, so any electrical fire from an EV is probably similar, and, I mean, especially if they're all lithium ion batteries.
From what we've seen in there, they're going to probably break down the same, no matter who makes it.
But, so, they took care of that? But, so they took care of that by dumping water on it?
That's what, that was the benefit, because at the time, there were not a lot of options. That was at least six or seven months ago. So again, this is still an evolving thing for all of us to learn how are we going to manage these problems, so.
But we're not aware of a particular problem with charging vehicles?
Not here locally, no, I think nationally, there's probably been some issues. But I'm not, you know, I haven't really delved into those details yet, but.
Okay, and you don't, so do you foresee regulations coming out like you have for solar panels on houses?
I would think so, but again, you know, that's all stuff that's going to be handled by the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA. Those are the codes that we follow and work with. And maybe even the electrical code may have something to help us out with, but that's going to be a little bit of time. I'm sure everybody is trying to do their best to provide the best code that they can to help protect as many people as possible. But sometimes it just takes some time.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, just one more question, chief. I'm noticing more and more charging stations in public places. I think I saw one today in a bank parking lot. Not that you're in the bank that long, but you know, who knows? So if a person is using one of these public places to charge their vehicle, is there anything they should be on the lookout for? Because it's not like it's in their own home where they can monitor, you know, wear and tear and they're the only person plugging it in. It's a public one where people may not be as cautious with the equipment. So what should they be looking at before they pick that puppy up?
Again, and I don't have a lot of knowledge or information on that, but I guess if it was me, you know, look at the cord. Does the cord look damaged? If it is, don't use it. If you're, if it's got some tines or prongs that you need to plug it in, check those. If they're damaged, don't use it. If it doesn't look right, I would recommend you don't use it, choose something else. Again, and I would suspect that most of those centers that have those charging stations, they want to maintain them very well so that people will use them. Because at the end of the day, they want to make their money off of charging your vehicle. So I would suspect that they will do their level best to make sure that they're well maintained so that people don't have issues.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, chief.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Right, we're going to go back in proper, where we pulled the public hearing out for, waiting for Pat's arrival, she's here. And so we'll move that forward. And the public hearing is to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to chapter 193 welfare guidelines of the town Merrimack Code pursuant to Charter Article Five. Pat, did you want to just touch on the things, it's basically updating of bringing us up to modern times with numbers and predominantly housekeeping, right?
Yes, so the updates that are, I'm asking for is basically just looking at some of the cost allowances that we have and making sure they're updated and more relevant to what the costs are and the inflation that's gone through. So we're looking at maintenance allowance, the cremation or burial costs and the telephone allowance. And the other thing that's in there is a new law that was passed that talks about more clarification on residency.
Yep. Yeah, so that, you know, if you have to keep them on the rolls or otherwise. So it's a, yeah, public hearing, so I'll open the hearing at eight fourteen. And no, no one from the public's coming to the mic, I will close the public hearing at eight fifteen. Thank you, Pat. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I think we covered it last time fairly well.
Yep, so we'd have to move this to a final reading, if somebody would like to make their motion.
Seconded.
Motion by Barb, seconded by Tom. To the consent agenda or?
Consent agenda is fine with me.
Yep.
Yep, all right. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, a six zero zero. Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, item number two back in proper order under new business council and the health officer to meet the annual reporting requirement as well as review and complete the summary of readiness to address local public health threats report for the Department of Health and Human, excuse me, Health and Human Services in accordance with RSA 128. Aaron Olson is here to speak with us this year.
I just want to let everybody know out there that the town of Merrimack doesn't have, doesn't have a separate board of health. The board of health is the town council.
Right.
And Aaron is here because RSA is as a little bit of a housekeeping issue as we go forward with some of the changes that occurred in the last couple of years. So I'll let her take it away because I don't want to steal her thunder.
Hit the button.
There we go, that's better. As Paul said, under RSA 128, town health officers, the local board of health and Merrimack here, that's town council and the health officer, shall meet at least once a year to review the state of local public health issues and concerns and provide information to the Department of Health and Human Services on the readiness to address relevant public health threats at the local level. I'm going to keep it pretty brief and I have a few just program updates with the health division and then a review of the readiness report that does get submitted to the state. Program updates with the health division. January one of this year, we implemented the new food service licensing fee structure that was approved by council, I believe, November twenty twenty two. I'm happy to report back that the implementation of this new fee structure has gone smoothly. Haven't run into any issues, so that's been working out well. Open Gov application and permitting software, the building and health division has been working with IT and Chief DeFranzo on getting the new application and permitting portal ready to go. Currently, the health division, myself, is on a four week work plan with the IT department and then the project team with Open Gov integrating all of the record types for the health division into that system. The portal that'll be online, and they're hoping to have this ready to go live early January twenty twenty four. In May of this year, the Nashua Health Department formed the Regional Health Equity Work Group. This is a strategic goal within one of the priority health areas that was determined in the Regional Community Health Improvement Plan. So I have been representing the community of Merrimack in the monthly meetings with that. And I'm excited to see just how that advances the understanding of health equity within the greater Nashua region. And then lastly is just a opportunity, I want to mention it's a new opportunity that the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services Health Officer Liaison Unit, it's a mouthful. They're organizing regional in-person meetings, they've never done this before. It's an opportunity to network with health officers within your public health region to learn about available resources and key points of contacts as well as receive training and regional updates. I bring this up, the Department of Health and Human Services is encouraging municipal leaders and officials such as town administrators, board of selectmen, town council to attend as well to learn about the role of the local health officer. So that is what I have for program updates, I don't know if there are any questions on any of that.
So is that, has that meeting happened or going to happen or you've got TBD written on this?
They haven't, they just started offering these, they haven't scheduled the meeting yet for our region. So once I get that information, I'll make sure I pass that along so it can get to all of you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. Just one little typo thing that I noticed on.
There's no page number.
There is no page number. Yeah, it's like page two on Merrimack Town Council members. You have Andy listed twice and Mackenzie's missing.
I will fix that.
Yeah, that's a simple one. And the only other question that I have is, I'm wondering on the water quality and drinking water contamination section, on the section for the narrative. I, I mean, I recognize this is, you know, they're just asking you to name three of the top public health challenges facing our municipality. And one of the things, I don't know if it will be important to mention that right now, we just appropriated $500,000 to the Department of Health and Human Services for a kidney cancer feasibility study because kidney cancer is one of the cancers known to be associated with PFAS contamination. And our community has had a fairly significant exposure for a long period of time. We have a forty-two percent higher rate of kidney cancers as compared to other places in New Hampshire. And there are health impacts now, you know, I mean, I know we're still finding those. And the state has been not quick to, as well as many other states, not quick to acknowledge that PFAS causes these negative health impacts. But I know, there was an Intercept article a while ago. Dr. Linda Bernbaum was the head of the NIH and said that PFAS do cause cancer. She was just not allowed to say that. So I just, I think it's important for people, people sometimes have a sense, oh, you know, we're filtering our water now, everything's fine. But people here have had a lot of, many years of exposure where our water was not filtered. So I don't, you know, I don't know if there's a way to just, I don't know, indicate somehow that our community, I mean, it's acknowledging certainly that, that we've had, that that's a priority issue. But that there are a number of known negative impacts and our, our area right now is big, is subject to a the third part of what may be a full epidemiological health study because of what we're showing already in health, health impacts. So just a point about, about that.
Certainly, and that's a perfect segue. I was going to move into the next section of the readiness report if there weren't any other questions on the program updates. But perfect subway, I want to segue into the readiness report and kind of what these top three public health challenges that we submit in the report are. Just a little bit of background on why we submit this and then kind of how they use that data or our narrative that we are giving them. So the New Hampshire Health Officer Association submits an annual state readiness report each year to the legislature. To supplement the report, the state asks that municipalities at the local level complete a readiness report. And this is used as an addendum to the state readiness report that they submit to legislature. The report provides an example to lawmakers of what public health work at local level is doing. And then it highlights the important needs and challenges that we're experiencing, the health officers and the communities. So as you're saying, you know, we, we listed as one of Merrimack's challenges last year, public health threat. And I think it can continue to be. And I wanted to open that up, we don't necessarily have to change what these top three public health threats we believe are in Merrimack. And it, you know, it sounds like that it still is probably our top, you know, threat in the community currently.
So if I can ask, you've got rental housing conditions as a top public health challenge in Merrimack. And yet you spend, according to these reports, most of your time doing food establishment inspections and things of that nature. Is that not considered a health threat in Merrimack more so than rental housing? Or what is it about rental housing that makes it a health threat in Merrimack?
I think when we had discussed that last year, I had brought forth more of what I saw and took into, you know, consideration and what we had discussed at the meeting last year. Again, these can change. There are obviously a lot more food establishments that get inspected on a routine basis. Housing complaints or nuisance complaints, those come in almost as a service request, but there are complaints that are reported and then investigated. In terms of how it's a challenge for health officers, there's not a lot of regulations or regulatory authority for New Hampshire health officers to enforce any sort of issues or violations within the rental housing code. So it's a big issue that health officers run into because mold, moisture, there's all sorts of complaints that we get, but we don't actually have enforcement authority over those problems that are health issues in rental units.
So that makes it a top housing, a top health concern or because you can't do anything about it? Did I misunderstand you or?
We just don't have a lot of enforcement authority, it was just one of the items discussed last year. So these, these three issues are public health threats and challenges faced by the health division and then also the community itself.
Okay. All right, but, but like inspections of food establishments and stuff like that is not a concern, as big a concern as the rental housing units? I mean, you do a lot of inspections.
I'm just trying to understand, so food establishments are a huge part of what I do, but we have a great food licensing program. Our establishments are all, you know, the inspections are going well, they are all licensed. It's not a challenge or threat currently in the community, it's not a challenge that I face currently in the role. We have a good food program.
It's not creating a community problem.
There, yeah, you know, routine inspections are happening, I have the training, I have the time, I have the capacity to make sure that our food establishments are licensed, the inspections are going well. And when there are violations or issues, those are, you know, I have the enforcement ability to be able to take care of those issues.
She has the stick when it comes to food licensing versus the rental housing. There's no stick in the RSA that she can go.
Which creates a problem.
Which creates a problem to her. And that's why she's saying that. With the food licensing, if I go in there and something's wrong, if she goes, not me, I don't. If Aaron goes in there and inspects and there's, you know, contamination between the three sinks, she can say, fix that, I'll be back in 24 hours and check it again. With the mold or, or whatever in an apartment, she goes in and finds mold, she can't say to the renter, I'm going to get your landlord to fix this right away. Unless it's egregious where plaster's falling off the ceiling or something like that. She doesn't have that stick that she, the same kind of enforcement in the laws. And that's why she's saying that's more of a health challenge than doing her, her inspection, her food inspections, which do take up a lot of her time.
Okay, but rental housing isn't even fifty percent of the housing in Merrimack. Any house would have those problems, right, mold and stuff like that. So we're picking on rental housing because you don't have, the renter doesn't have control of it? Or I just, I'm curious.
Yeah, if I, if I could, one of the things that is difficult for her to do is in a rental unit, if you and I are renting, you have your space, I have mine, I have no control over what you do in your space. So if your space, you want to leave uncamped and not take care of it and have all these issues and problems, well, that can become a health threat to me. She has no ability to enforce anything upon you or even the landlord to get you to do something. So that's one of the challenges. We spoke last year, this was kind of like the first time we had to pick some opportunities for us to work on and figure out how to improve as we move forward, right? So these were the ones that we chose last year. And you're right, we don't have to choose these three again, we can certainly choose three others. But obviously, water is still a problem, so that probably should still be on the list. If we don't think rental housing conditions are a problem, we can take it off the list and we can work on something else. The goal for this, hopefully someday, we don't have anything on the list because we've done our due diligence and have, you know, improved our community, right? At the end of the day, that's what we want to do. So if you want to change this one, we certainly could, but I do know it's still an issue for, you know, the health division when they go out and they get a complaint. We could document it, but there's not a lot of things we can do to include even like some of the hoarding issues that even we get as the fire department, right? Hey, what can you guys do? What can we do? And you're right, single family homes.
But it's not ours rental, though, I guess.
No, but single family homes, at least it's on their own property, it may not affect the neighbor. Especially if it's, you know, a large acreage plot, you know, and there's a lot of acreage between your home and my home, let's just say, right? So as things get tighter, usually complaints raise a little more. Because the way you live is not the way that I live, so your way of living is wrong. That's not necessarily accurate and correct. You have the right to live the way that you choose. It's just sometimes, you know, the way people choose to live is not always the best and healthiest way to live, so. But we'll certainly look at whatever you want to recommend and suggest, we'll certainly look at anything you'd like to do. But this is where we started.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I'm not trying to pick on anything, I'm just wondering what rentals is, is the way to focus on it or whether it's just housing conditions or?
Again, on the way I have it listed on here, just rental housing conditions in the report and the narrative, there is more information below it. And as chief said, you know, this is, you know, issues we acknowledged last year, wanted to submit, we can change them going forward. More than happy to do so, and that's, you know, what I'm here tonight for. I'm not just the board of health, you know, we want input from, from all of you as well, if you have other issues or ideas.
Okay.
Nancy.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. I can imagine that. I can imagine that especially as we increase housing units closer together, that will become probably more of a problem. So what do you do, Erin, when you encounter those issues and you thought, you identify whatever, bedbugs in a, whatever, a residence in or a place, whatever, and your hands are tied yourself? So what can you do with that information? Is there, what, is there an enforcement entity someplace else that you report to? Or what happens?
So I do have enforcement authority. There is an RSA for health officers with, you know, the minimum standards of habitation. I think, I don't quote me on this, there's fourteen points that are, you know, enforceable. Again, it's not a very stringent code, so if I have a complaint, I will go do the inspection, document, find the code that it's under. But again, to act, good faith and effort is really all that that code can require to have the owner fix the issue of that rental unit. If it's, you know, an egregious or an imminent health hazard and the owner or landlord of the property doesn't get it fixed, there are provisions to, you know, have them take into court and get that issue resolved. But again, that's, it's a large hurdle to get over because the RSA's do have a lot of gray area and enforcement authority isn't very strong.
Thank you.
Yep.
Of course, I mean, I normally, it's pretty laid back, freewheeling, so that was my mistake.
Freelancing. So Erin, for the public health emergency preparedness, we actually do have an emergency preparedness plan for the flu as well as one for COVID-19. Especially in light of COVID, you know, things have changed. We have new learnings since I wrote that original one several years ago. So are there any plans to actually look at those and update them?
So the chief and I, we do, I attend the Greater Nashua Emergency Preparedness. Again, it's a regional group that meets quarterly. Haven't met, I think most recently was early summer, and we were still reviewing the after-action report from COVID. So collecting all the information, you know, from the communities on what went well, what didn't, and that information was then getting reported back to the state. And that information kind of all gets compiled, brought back to us. So that, you know, that can be integrated into those public health emergency plans for things like the flu pandemics going forward.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So going back to the Section Three Local Board of Health, Nancy Murphy pointed out that McKenzie's name was off and Andy was double dipping. But down below, it talks about, it talks about the meeting with the Board of Health having this past year, one meeting to be determined. Is that the meeting we had last year that this is reporting on or is that today's meeting?
Yeah, this is the draft for the readiness report this year. I will edit that part with the counselors, I did think I did. But I don't know where my mind was. So I, the meeting hadn't yet been scheduled, I didn't know which date. So when I go back, I will put in today's date for that meeting and, you know, update any relevant information before it gets submitted to the state.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Now, in the end, is there any signatures, this gets ready to go back to the state or is Erin take care of that?
Is there anything that you need from the council to more effectively do your job? Aside from, yeah.
In the immediate, I wouldn't say so. I think that's a broad question. I think now that I've been here three years and it, the position has, you know, long-term, it was part-time, I've been here full-time now for about two and a half years. I've really been able to create the program. Yes, it existed before, but on a part-time basis with so many responsibilities, not everything was, you know, up to date. So I think the program is heading in a good direction. You know, we have this new online portal going forward and, you know, always just moving forward. So in the immediate, I can't think of anything, but thank you.
Let us know if you do. Let the chief know, and the chief will let us know.
We'll let Paul know, Paul will let us know. It's a chain of command.
That's right.
If we don't hear anything different, we're gonna stick with the same three health challenges for our community. But certainly if you have a change or you want to think about something, certainly get it to Paul and he'll get it to us and we can make the adjustment. But if we don't hear anything, we'll just go with what we have for now.
I do want to say, you know, we're not always just limited to this time of year. The state, you know, the health officer liaison, you know, they just, they always take input if there is issues or things that we think, you know, should be brought up to them. You know, that information can always get back to me and I can always, you know, bring that up to them and provide that information. You know, if, if nobody brings it forward, nobody in, you know, the legislature in those positions is gonna know about it. So I'm always happy to do that.
And, and this is a two-way street, so if you need anything from us, be sure to ask.
I appreciate that.
Nancy?
Just one last question, thanks Erin. On the public health emergency preparedness section, just for people that may be watching, is there a place that the community can go to since we're, it's gonna be a flu season and COVID season? Is there a place that people can go to and find out? Is, I'm assuming it's probably updated from last year?
So again, it's all regional, it's a little funky how it works. So on the Nashua website, they do have a page where, and they have a weekly newsletter that provides all sorts of updates with events. Again, we're part of that region, so all of their back, you know, their clinics, those are all available to, you know, the residents of Merrimack. So I, I can definitely find that website and pass along and also put it on the health division website to steer people towards that page and they can sign up for that newsletter to receive it weekly.
That's great, thank, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Erin, I just, to kind of, for my own mind, bring it all into closure, the rental housing conditions, you get a lot of calls on that?
I don't get too many. It seems like they, they all come in waves. In the winter, they get a little bit more with heat. Sometimes in the summer, I'll get a lot more mold and moisture. I really don't see too many complaints here in Merrimack. I definitely think I saw more during COVID, you had more people in their home more of the time. But it, it doesn't take up a huge percentage of my, of my time.
Because that's only, whether or not it stays, the chief brought it back to me because I didn't want to interrupt the conversation that was going on earlier about it. But if it's, if, you know, for that, it seems like the apartment, you know, community apartment complexes would be more likely the situation where you are neighbor against neighbor. If it's not a huge thing, this makes it sound big to me as a, as a single line item. And if it's not really that big, it can stay, it can go, but it just, you know, and maybe I'm just reading into it more than it is there. But so I'm willing, you know, we can leave it as it is.
This might be way off base and you feel free to tell me if I am.
You will.
They tell me I have all the types. Is there much communication between, I'm thinking of all the ambulance calls that you might receive? And taking data from that, that might have an impact in terms of public health? I'm thinking like drug overdoses, heart attacks. There may be trends that are occurring as a result of the ambulance calls, which would identify an issue in terms of public health. Does that make sense?
I don't want to say you're super off-base, that definitely does encompass, you know, public health, that you're looking at large data sets with information like that. Again, coming back regionally, I'm one person here in Merrimack. In Nashua, you know, they have their behavioral health, their community health, their environmental health. And they do have an amazing dashboard on their website where they have begun collecting data. They do the community health assessment, the community health improvement plan. And part of those, I want to say they're on a three or five-year basis, part of that is collecting that data for the region to understand demographically, what are the trends? What are the issues? Again, I can find that link and, and put it on the website, but it is on the Nashville website. They do collect that data and information to see what those health trends are and what is a priority area.
Because I'm just thinking, if they were significant, and it may not be significant, so wouldn't be applicable then. But if there was a significant trend happening that would create a problem that should be identified as a public challenge, public health challenge. I mean, do we have a lot of drug overdose? I mean, I don't know. I thought of drug overdoses because if there were dramatic increase, then that's something that should be a public challenge in Merrimack.
Sure, I mean, we could certainly look into it. I don't know if we have a ton or a small amount, we get our fair share. I'm not gonna say we don't have it, but we do. But I think a lot of our reports go into the state's database, through the TEMSA system. And I think that's where the region and the Nashua system pulls a lot of its data from. Because all of that information is there. But I can confirm that, I'm not, I don't want to speak and say it's a hundred percent there. I think that's how the system works, I'm still learning how it all works.
I'm just trying to think, how would you find that information out?
But that's a flag.
That would help you identify that that's a flag that might overtake the rental housing condition.
Right.
That's all. You know, is this, is there a mechanism? And I do understand you're limited in your ability to intervene.
Yes.
Okay. But if it were something that was significant that we should address, if it's something that is identified from your data, I would hope, let's put it this way, if it's significant enough, that it should be brought to us for intervention. We're highlighting it and we, we may or may not be able to do anything. But adding that on top of what you already do might be unrealistic. But it should be identified as an issue that we should deal with. That's all.
Sure.
So I, I think it's good to put those links in on our town webpage because I don't think a lot of people understand about catchment areas.
Yes.
And they wouldn't even think to look at Nashua, you know, they'd look at Merrimack and say, oh, it's not there. So yeah, I think those, putting, adding all of those links would be good. So if anybody does want to see that type of data, you know, it's there.
And that's what, Nashua has a huge push and that's a big part of our, you know, health equity work group is, we are part of this region. There are so many resources that are available to all different demographics of our residents and all of the other, sorry, and all of the other, you know, fifteen communities are part of that region. So how do we make more people aware of these resources that are available to them?
And that's one of the interventions.
Correct.
Is awareness.
Yep, yep, and making sure all, you know, demographics have equal, you know, awareness, communication, are able to have that information available.
But, but Barbara's point, I think, was you mentioned Nashua's website three or four times tonight. And just mentioned Merrimack's website that you can get to Nashua's website from, from there.
Yep.
So that.
Yep, definitely.
Very obvious.
Very doable.
Thank you.
I really like Nancy's idea. I think from a public health perspective, ambulance calls are a great data set. And I mean, we don't need Nashua's. We know how many, when you get a call, we know whether they're going to an overdose or maybe somebody, somebody that's fallen that I just.
Maybe there's an elderly population.
Exactly.
That's peaking.
Right, and that's what I actually, I just know from personal experience, a couple of times helping an elderly person to say, oh, he calls the fire department, the police fire all the time for a lift or, so those, those, that data would identify health issues and needs in the, within the community. So I personally would rather see that be like number two. And not that, and I get the problems, having worked, I worked in Manchester, so I knew a lot of the housing stuff and I, and I get that, that's a, it's an issue. But I just think to really give us an overall perspective about Merrimack health, that that data would be so telling and would really help identify, what do we need to do? What, you know, what, what addiction stuff do we need to address? What do we need to, to address for health support for elderly seniors living alone? Or, you know, those kinds of things. And I, I just think it would be a great tool to get over the next year and look and just say, wait a minute, you know what? This is.
It's like an evaluation of Merrimack community needs.
Exactly, yes.
And one method to do it is looking at the data.
But realize that we're not gonna have that for this report. So that might be something that we look at over the next year or so to start gathering some of that information because we don't have that information gathered right now. And what, what Erin is saying is that Nashua is taking the regional numbers and crunching them and doing their regional, I don't, I haven't been on this website, we'll get the links up, she'll get them up, she'll put them on her health page that people can click on and it'll go right to Nashua for the information. I guess the point is, is that for the report that's going in in a week or so, we know we got water quality, we know we have health emergency preparedness, is there something else? Maybe we don't call it rental housing condition, maybe we just call it housing conditions or, or something of that sort or.
So if you don't mind, I, I'm just trying to encompass all of it. So this is really just saying what we're seeing now. And if we're identifying that we believe, you know, data collection or data visualization or even just understanding the data that is available and out there and, you know, how we may be able to utilize that, we could just say water quality, data collection or understanding, you know, data visualization as a challenge right now that we want to work towards having better understanding or ability to utilize in this upcoming year. So does that encompass?
Available data.
Yeah.
Wait, I bet, I, my understanding is those three are the health challenges were from 2022.
That was last year.
Now we're setting another one, right?
Correct.
So that's why I'm thinking the data collection and looking at the public health for 2023. I recognize we don't have that now. But I, I think we know where to get it. I mean, we're not talking deep stuff. What, what we actually have available in our community, that's pretty, should be pretty easily accessible over the next year. That's what I, and I would love to see that to be number two.
But if, I think the chief has, had mentioned he's gonna dig into it to see how much of our information is in fact utilized, because if it's a regional thing, that would work for me, I think. It's without putting another burden of trying to go back and call out information that we've had, or if we're gonna just start from this point forward, having the spreadsheet set up.
Let us know what's easiest.
Well, and that's why I think.
You may be able to already filter by community within, you know, the data that's, that are on that website. I will just have to dive deeper. And that's something that in, you know, my regional meetings, I can bring forward. Again, this stuff doesn't happen overnight, but if this is a challenge or something we want to see, I'm more than happy to bring that to those meetings and say, what can we do about this going forward? Can we get this data put in there?
All right, I guess we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks Erin, thanks chief.
Thanks Erin.
Thank you.
Run while you can.
I'm gonna be quiet the rest of the night.
Item number three under new business, the council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter 167 Stormwater Management Standards of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article Five. This evening, we have Dawn and Leo. Give us what we need. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So a little history. This is part of the MS four. That's where this is coming from. I've threatened for a couple of years to come in because a few years ago, we were audited. And we've been working on some of their suggestions that they want us to try to improve. So one of them was improving our Code 167. We were also lacking the illicit discharge and detection program that wasn't listed in the 167. I tried to pull it all into one and when I brought this forward, the town manager decided that it should be in two different codes. And that's why you'll see 167 tonight, which was the old one that needs to be a little bit revamped. And then a new code, 168 for the illicit discharge. So this one, this chapter 167 is what we're going to address first. And you had a chapter 167, which was stormwater management and standards. We first off have enhanced the purpose and intent a little bit, but it's basically the water qualities, what we're talking about for this whole chapter. They added a, they wanted a lot of definitions added in, so I put a lot of those in. They're quite extensive. Then they wanted some regulatory information, which I've put in. I will mention that this has gone to the attorney, it has not come back yet. So I won't make any changes until he decides what we need to address. So under the Section 167-6 requirements for the stormwater management, that section was there mostly, but we needed to enhance what it was saying. So there are different plans underneath the, the MS four that you have to accomplish. One which is called the Stormwater Management Plan or the SWMP, and we lovingly call it the swamp, just to give it a name. And this is, comes from the Coalition, this, this isn't just here, it's the Coalition. This, this isn't just here, it's the coalition. So we had to define what the coalition, the swamp says. And it has to contain not only the language that we had before, but in that swamp plan, it has to have the operations and maintenance for pre-construction, post-construction, reconstruction. It has to encompass everything and what happens in the future. That's what your swamp is. So within your swamp, you have a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWPPP or SWIP, that's what we call it. So the first part of that deals with before you do any constructions out there. You need to have pre-construction meetings, which we've always done. We've followed a lot of these guidelines. We've, we've always, we've done what they said, what the EPA wants is then we put into writing. And that's what we've done. So a lot of what you see here, we already do and we've been doing right along. And to try to explain that to them, they're from Boston and they have a different mindset. So you have to think about that a little bit. So for the most part, our stormwater prevention plan, it was in good shape. You see, there's a few additions here and there. Our post-construction, which is under item C, needed a little bit more help. They didn't, they didn't quite believe us that it was, we, and actually, we didn't hold the post-construction afterwards. Because we usually do an approval process, which is a little bit different. Now we actually hold the post-construction meetings and we've outlined everything here that we need to follow. The only part that wasn't in here at all was our bond release. So now we've got our bond release requirements being spelled out in here. But again, we go through all of this process and we have been, it's just putting this into writing. Enforcement, that's been one of our sticking points on this and why it's been very difficult to bring it in. I've had talks with the fire chief and the health officer because they are the ones that are listed under the RSAs. It is not Public Works. The, the Roberts position of the zoning and planning, they can also have authority to be able to shut anybody down or to do cease and desist. Public Works does not. So under the RSA, so I've, we've spelled all that out and we've also allowed for some waivers because not everything fits into the same shoe. So that's basically what we did for 167. It was cleaning up what they was, or doing additions, I wouldn't say cleaning up, but doing some additions to, to be able to put into writing what the EPA had wanted us to do. Questions, comments, concerns?
So. When an applicant comes before the planning board and they've got their plates and they're showing like where they're doing a catch basin or, you know, topography of where a certain drainage is going, et cetera. Is that because they've already seen you and talked to you about that or are they just?
Through the planning process, it comes to us and we do go through the plan, doing our, using our construction requirements. And what's outlined in the subdivision zoning and site plan regulations. And we also apply the MS four. So when they get, by the time they get to doing a, a pre-construction meeting, they have to understand that if those catch basins or detention basins are going to remain private, there are certain things that they have to do. They're going to have to put that in the deeds that, and they're going to have to do reporting once a year to community development. That is being spelled out in here. That's one of the big factors is in the post-development, it's going to continue in years going on. It's not just a one and done.
And for the post-inspection, the post-construction process, I, I see, you know, that you meet with them. But does anyone actually check to see if they did what they said they did?
Oh, absolutely.
Because you know how that goes someday.
I, I, we go through, in fact, we just accepted a, an as-built plan. So we go through and make sure all the utilities are correct, the road, if we're accepting the road, that's there, it's been designed and built per plan. We go through the whole thing, we make sure what we, we have is called a red line plan. So we make them take their original plan, put what has actually been built so we can see the difference between what was proposed and what was existing. And it better be pretty close.
Okay, thank you.
Plus we're out during the entire construction. If it's going to be town maintained or town owned.
Yeah.
We are out there all the time, daily, weekly, whatever it takes.
So, go ahead, Tom.
So how, how big of a project does this apply to? I mean, if somebody's putting a back deck on their property.
20,000 square feet or more.
20,000 square feet of disturbed land use or?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the issues that is now coming up is the single-family house. And if they don't hit the 20,000 square foot, but if it's just a lot, open lot, and they're putting in a house, quite often, it's more than 20,000 square foot. But they haven't gone through the planning process. That is, it's becoming an issue because those are the lots that are creating the problems is what we're finding. And not just here in town. I mean, this is, we've been talking about this through our coalition.
But it's 20,000 square feet of disturbed property or something? So if they have to clear for a septic system and stuff like that, that's considered part of the disturbance?
We have to do is create some type of mechanism, which we haven't done yet, to be able to trip those that are over the 20,000.
And you're working on that?
We're.
I mean, okay, does that go into something like this chapter or is?
It can go into the regulations.
Oh, okay. And I just wanted to point out or ask, the, under this purpose, it talks in the second line, the intent is to protect the local natural resources of the Merrimack by establishing and enforcing minimum. Which Merrimack are we talking about? The town, the river?
The town.
The, so the town of Merrimack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, you had said that when people have these drainage systems that will remain on their property, they have to report annually to community development. Is community development being notified of those so they can know what will happen or is this something that will just?
Yes, yes, we're, we're starting lists. I mean, we're not going back in time, we're not making somebody up. But when the EPA came to us and said, you shall, we started doing our post-construction. And at that point, anything moving forward has to, we have to make sure that it's gone through the, and it was always in the ordinance. And we always, that's what we fought with them. It's here, but they didn't feel it was elaborate enough.
All right, is there anything? On this?
And just in 167 three regulations, that's basically the standard regulation that we have for adopting or modifying town code, right?
Yes.
That's, you're just respecifying it to be complete?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Every time we come to this, I think of Conker not having to do it, it just bugs me. So anyhow.
They were closer, they were only within 200 people this time, so next time around.
It's still, you've explained it 15 times, it still makes no sense to me, but, but I appreciate that. Nancy?
Thank you. Thanks, Dawn. Dawn, on 167 colon five page, the enforcement violations and penalties. And I don't know if this is everything. It doesn't list what those are, are those someplace else? It says that, you know, there may be remedies and penalties, but doesn't say what they are.
They're under the RSA.
They're in the RSA.
They're in the RSA.
Okay, yes, thank you.
No, 167 seven?
Okay, yeah, because five, she said five because I'm looking at it, it's not there.
It was five, it is now seven.
Yeah, it's, the five is. The five up there is marked out. So 167 seven is the section.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So you need a motion from us?
Yeah, we have to move this to a second reading if that's the desire.
Yep.
All right.
Did we, did we say that the attorney has not commented on it?
Attorney's reviewing it right now. We, we brought this forward by the public hearing if there's any major changes. We'll have to look at it. If there's major changes, then we'll bring it back for another first read.
Okay.
If it's minor, then we'll just continue with the public hearing, let the council know.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Move for the changes to chapter 67 of the Stormwater Management Standards be moved to the second reading dependent on the feedback from legal review.
Second?
Public hearing.
Which is the second reading, isn't it?
Second reading is public hearing.
Oh, okay, yep.
You just had to say.
You make it clear.
Public hearing, here.
I'll second that.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go.
Any further discussion? All this in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, 600. All right, the next is council to consider the addition of chapter 168 illicit discharge and detection and elimination to update the Merrimack Town Code to current requirements of the EPA MS four permit pursuant to Charter Article Five.
So this is entirely new?
Yes.
You didn't have a 168 before? So this is the illicit discharge and detection and elimination part. And if you remember from your MS four verbiages I've been spelling out for the last five years, this is, would be considered MCM number three. So we do a lot of, MCM number three is the, is a bulk of the work. It's all of our testing, all of our catchment areas. We have to go find something. And last year, we found that the geese were polluting the water. And it was like, what would you like me to do with the geese in the pond? You know, but we had to trace it back because we had too high. She cooked them, what do you mean?
There you go. I knew it.
So part of this. So the illicit discharge is, part of this is detecting where there could be issues and then solving those issues. So this particular part also deals with people tying into the drainage line instead of the sewer line, which we happened to have had a couple of months before I came here the first time, seven years ago. They had accidentally tied in and all of a sudden, there's sewage ending up in the Sauhegan River.
Oh, yes.
When the house got, was renovated and then the new people moved in and all of a sudden, there's sewage down in the rip. So they had gone to the wrong line and tied into the wrong line. So things like that, that would be an illicit discharge if you wanted to get an example of what that is. We've had somebody dumping paint cans down catch basins and, you know, DES was called in. We've always followed the same procedures through time, but it was never written and that was our problem. In order to do that, the fire chief and the health officer are named in here because they are the ones that have the health, this would be considered a health issue. They are the ones that have the authority in the town. So we've had a lot of talk with them and they understand this. And, you know, at first they're like, but we do this, this is what we do. And they do it automatically because as soon as we find something, we call them immediately. And then they call DES immediately or whoever else they need to call. So that's what this, this whole thing, it's all fairly new. It's a lot of, a lot of definitions because that's the way EPA likes it. You go through the regulations, same spot. The responsibilities and the authority, and this is why, what we were kind of hung up on before, but through the RSAs, they are the ones that are responsible. And ultimately, it's the state of New Hampshire DES, that they're the ultimate authority. So it goes through notification and the big part that EPA really wanted was the enforcement. Because EPA keeps saying, oh, you don't have a, you know, fines and penalties. Well, we, that will give us that authority, but we try to catch things before we get to that. Because you've got to remember EPA's in Boston, they have a different atmosphere and they don't understand the way we deal with it. We go out weekly, monthly, whatever, to try to catch, especially while they're under construction, erosion problems so that it doesn't go, get to our brooks and rivers. We try to solve those problems before and they can't seem to understand that, you know, we're proactive versus sitting back and then having something happen to the catastrophe.
And I appreciate that, by the way.
You know, and, and when we, when we do have a problem, I talk to the chief and we call DES and it's immediate.
So.
Oh, Tom, Barbara, sorry.
You can go first.
Well, I just, I was just wondering if under enforcement, it really talks about enforcement. It talks, it says it's illegal to do things illegal and, or it's unlawful to do things illegal and that the town council retains authority to enter into consent agreements. Do you really talk about enforcement at all in there or?
Well, the last bit is the costs and fees, court actions, and they're under the RSA.
For the purpose of eliminating violations of the same and recovering fines, costs and fees without court action.
I took the language from.
Did you?
Yeah, I did, I didn't make this up.
Well, I don't know where it comes from, I'm not challenging.
Between the EPA template and the southeast watershed, which the EPA also references quite a bit. They're over in the seacoast, they would seacoast area, 45 towns over in that area. And they did a whole book up because they started back in 2003 when all of this came, came down to, you know, the smaller communities from the large. So I took a lot of the languages from the places to put this together.
I mean, if that's, if that's sufficient, I'm okay. I just, I'm trying to understand it. Thank you.
So I'm just curious, the town, the fire chief and the town health officer get mentioned a lot. How much does this add to their current workload? Any idea?
Not very much because it.
You don't let it?
Basically.
Okay.
It's no more than what they already do.
Okay.
It's just spelling it out.
This is just spelling it out. It's no more, we might have one occurrence a year or every two years.
Okay.
But the reason why they're in here is, as Donna said, she has no stick. The fire chief, the health officer, community development, based on RSAs at the state level legislatures, need to make that change to give Dawn the stick. She works in conjunction with them to get this done. She calls them in and does most of the legwork before they get called in to these projects. So that's why they're in these two ordinances as much as they are, is because they're the ones with the authority based on the RSAs. And the health officer might not be Eric, it could be Rick Jones, he's building and health. It could be him gets called in. It's just called out that way in the, in the ordinance.
So what stick do they have?
They have RSAs.
They had just the RSAs.
Yes. They're mentioned in the RSAs as the enforcement people. So they're the only ones who can do enforcement.
Okay, but when they get called out, what is it, what, what, I mean, they can, they have the enforcement, they have the ability to say to the owner or whatever, fix it?
They can do cease and desist, they have much more power.
That's what I'm saying, because we were just talking about rental property and they don't have a stick. So I just want to make sure, they're mentioned all over the place, I want to make sure they have a stick because other than that, we're wasting our time.
Right, they, they are given more latitude in the RSAs that are spell out what they can and cannot do for illegal discharges and things of that sort. And certain RSAs, they have more authority than other RSAs.
Should that be in here?
No.
Okay.
Remember, you got, you, you got a federal, you got a federal government, you got a federal entity that is making a state municipal entity write a legal discharge ordinance based on a MS four permit, which is federal. Because the state of New Hampshire does not have EPA. DES gives itself over to the EPA on. DES gives itself over to the EPA on things such as MS four. And so you have a federal entity that's looking at Massachusetts and looking at other, other organizations throughout the state saying this is how we want to have it done. And to get our ordinances in line to what our RSA say with the people who can actually enforce the laws, that's how come we have to mention the fire chief, the health officer, the community development director, and not DPW? Because in other areas with EPA, DPW is not environmental. They're just stakeholes, plow roads, paved roads. That's what DPW, build bridges. They're not into the, what we do here in our administration is really review these projects and take them over.
And we do, don't forget recycling and waste...
Well, yeah, but I...
We get all the good jobs.
That are not what I'm saying, my eyes, in the federal government's eyes, that's what DPW it is. It isn't what we do here where we have roads inspections and things of that sort.
Dawn's protecting her departments.
But I presume she doesn't even want enforcement. I mean, that was a funny response over there. No, absolutely.
And actually, I did throw in DPW director in a couple of spots where...
I noticed.
So we could all work together so that they didn't feel like they were hanging out there without any backing.
Yep, right. Okay. Same thing here, legal's gonna be looking at this.
Similar motion.
Just bring it forward to a public hearing and then we have to look forward.
It's a pleasure. Barbara?
So moved.
Sit.
Motion to move it to a public hearing and, uh...
After legal...
After reviewed by legal.
Well, yeah, it'll happen automatically. And if it, if it doesn't work, then we take it back. And, um, motion by Barbara, second by Tom, was that?
It was Nancy.
It was Nancy. Voice changed. Um, so any further discussion? None? I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, by us six zero zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I didn't want Leo speak, I should have. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't think Leo cares.
Thanks for being here this evening.
He'll have one of those...
Good to see you again.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
All right. Item number five under new business, council to discuss the Sauhegan River local advisory committee vacancy and the next steps in filling it. Um, we were notified that, um, James Taylor had declined to renew his membership and they're looking for nominations for the new appointment.
That is correct. Excuse me, in a nutshell. And, uh, do we want to follow our, uh, normal appointment policy as a thirty-day notice? And I think that, um, conservation commission should also make this announcement at their next meeting, saying that we're looking for people in, in the Sauhegan River Council.
I think that would work.
So that we could get people, because not everybody who watches town council is into rivers and streams and conservation as much as, you know, the conservation...
They watch it when they can't sleep.
That's it.
You said that, not me.
So that's, that'll work for everybody?
So, um, just kind of get a motion saying that we're gonna follow our appointment policy.
Second.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Barbara.
Is it a motion for what? To do what?
To follow our appointment policy of the thirty-day, thirty-day notice.
Is that what this whole page is about? No.
Well, because it's...
To initiate the policy.
To initiate the policy. You have to take action to initiate the search.
Is that okay, Andy?
I'm good.
Yes, you are.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, uh, six zero zero.
Also, this is to cross off them saying that we are going out. This, the council.
Yep. All right. Um, item number six under new business, um, I don't want to mispronounce it, but it's Laverne family. The Laverne family would like to donate and install a memorial park bench with an estimated value of two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars at a site by the river along the trail system at Wildcat Falls in honor of Michael Laverne, who passed away in two thousand twelve pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five E in Charter Article eight, section fifteen. And Andy, um, I don't know, you brought this forward, I didn't know if you want to speak.
Yeah, I did bring this forward. So this came in front of, uh, the conservation commission. Um, it was reviewed at the conservation commission and everybody's in, in favor of this, although the, the conservation commission doesn't have the authority to accept donations. And so we, we last minute got it on the, the agenda here to come to town council so we could make it, uh, official. Yeah. So the, yeah, that's the location, proposed location. Uh, the Laverne family has found a vendor that is willing to, and I don't know if you have the pictures in your packet. Um, they do. So it is a nice granite bench. Um, and the vendor has assured them that they have a method to get it out there into Wildcat Falls and put it in that particular location. Um, the conservation commission reviewed that process and they're, they're good with the vendor getting it out there.
I've walked that trail. It needs a bench. But that's a very nice thing. That, but that was my one question, how are they gonna get it out there?
Yeah, so they actually have a cart that, um, they can put this on and it'll help, help get it out there, so.
Now, do they have to do the metal?
They have to follow guidelines to pin it. Uh, it's granite, so they would have to follow the policy and pin it in.
I, I thought we had put an exemption in there. And, and not that this won't meet the, the policy, the bench policy that we put, but I thought we had put an exemption in there for conservation land. I thought when we did that policy, am I mistaken?
I believe it was, uh, didn't have to be just granite. It was for other cut types of benches and things of that sort. But they still need to pin it. Because the worst thing you want to do is not have it pinned and somebody comes over there and throws it down the hill into the river.
Yeah, that would be awful.
Do we need a motion to...
So I would like to move to accept the donation from the Laverne family in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of procurement and installation of a memorial bench at Wildcat Falls in honor of Michael Laverne pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash E and Charter Article eight dash fifteen.
Second.
By Andy, second by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? See none?
Just that conservation committee was okay with this?
Yes, they were.
Very good. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, Andy. Uh, next on the item, agenda, the minutes of September twenty-eighth. No changes? I guess we'll vote on the minutes of September twenty-eighth then? All those in favor?
We have that a motion, I have a motion.
Okay, I thought minutes, I thought we talked about that, but okay.
No, no, what it is, is we ask for changes. And then once the change is there, then we can do the motion.
Nancy?
Thank you. I just, um, have a change on page five of eight, down the bottom on line forty-seven. Um, the, there's a couple of words missing, uh, been put in. Um, but it says, "been put in that have not yet been assigned." It's bill numbers, B-I-L-L numbers, comma.
Okay, we good there?
Yep.
Now I'll say, "Accept the motion."
Motion to accept the minutes of September twenty-eighth as many...
Second.
Yep. Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, um, six zero zero. Comments from the press? There's no one here, nor from the public? Comments from the council?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on Saturday, we had the Vet to Vote, uh, event over at Jamie's. Um, it was very interesting. We, unfortunately, we didn't have as many people as I would have liked to have seen. But I thought for those people that did show up, it, it was good. And I believe, um, Merrimack TV was there as well as other, uh, news outlets. And they did, you know, brief synopses. But I believe there's an educational video that may result from that, um, that walks through and explains what each of the various stations do as you go through the voting process. So, um, it was, for those that showed up, I think it was well worthwhile and they had some good questions.
Very good. Nancy?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to again mention the December sixteenth noon Reeds Across America event. And, um, there's, uh, the Merrimack Reeds Across America, um, you can find on any of the social media pages. We're, we have currently three hundred and thirty-three wreaths purchased and we need three hundred and seventeen more. Um, I think we'll probably have a table at the Knights of Columbus Fair, which is, I think, the second week in November. Um, but, uh, we're certainly looking for, um, sponsorship of wreaths so that we can place a wreath on every veteran's grave in Merrimack. Okay, and that would be the third or fourth for the Knights of Columbus, um, fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, Tom?
Just by way of announcement, Special Olympics is having a fundraising, uh, Heroes Cup baseball game this weekend, um, held up in, in Manchester at the ball field. And, uh, they're accepting donations, so there's not a fixed charge to get in, but they are encouraging people to come out. This was postponed from the September event. But it's to raise money for Special Olympics in the state of New Hampshire, some of which comes back to, uh, impact Merrimack residents as well. Um, so if anybody's interested in going to see the police and fire compete in a baseball game, um, Saturday, I don't know exactly what time it starts. Um, but, uh, you can probably find it on the New Hampshire Special Olympics website.
Great, thank you, Tom. And, uh, the only thing, comments I have to make are two big moments in, um, my family's life is my folks hit their seventieth anniversary on Tuesday.
God bless them.
And this past Saturday, my baby got engaged, so, uh, potentially more grandbabies on the way. That wasn't important to the town, but it was important today. I know, I know. So without that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. By Barbara, second by Tom. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, everybody.